I call the meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City Schools to order. Mr. Gaynor, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cobal.
Here.
Ms. Pepler.
Here.
Mr. Register.
Here.
Mr. Silverman.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Zucker.
Here.
Okay. Then, this is a work session, but we have a couple of business items that we need to take care of, so all of those who are raring to get into the work session, hold your horses. The first thing that we want to do is, we have a resolution authorizing the purchase and sale of the Millikan property. And so, we want to deal with that first thing on the list. The board members have a copy of the resolution in their possession, and I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussions? Mr. Gaynor.
No, no, no. I was raising my hand.
I think Mr. Gaynor has...
I'd be prepared to say something. No, I'll just give you a very high-level overview of what the terms are here. This was an email that was sent by your legal counsel, which is Kathy Petrie, but also, we have Dana Weiss with us tonight from Squire Patton Boggs in case you have any further questions that we need to ask. But as Kathy mentions here, "To review, the purchase agreement provides for a cash sale of the property site for the Millikan building at a price of $650,000. The Stables property is not included in the sale." Just so that's made very clear. "The purchaser will be responsible," the purchaser being Mosdows, "for any closing costs, including any title work and escrow fees. The agreement is subject to several contingencies. For the board, the agreement is subject to its obtaining an easement from the Stables property to Severance Circle. It is also subject to the district obtaining appropriate alternative space for its workers and tradespeople. For Mosdows, the agreement is subject to its obtaining a conditional use permit from the city for the use of the properties and non-public school, and also, it is conditional in terms of them obtaining financing on satisfactory terms from the city." So, that's, in a nutshell, the basis for the proposal and the resolution that you have before you tonight, along with a whole lot of legalese on top of that. I don't have a question, except if somebody has questions first.
Well, I have a question. And my question is maybe not completely well-formed, but would we be looking at another resolution to actually approve the sale document at some point?
I'll defer to Mr. Shigalis on that point.
Once the conditions are met, is that...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there will be a second resolution.
So what...
I'm getting the nod from our legal counsel in the audience, so, yes.
Well, she can speak here.
So, this is allowing us to effectuate the terms, and then there will be another resolution that will come before you to...
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. There are some conditions that need to be satisfied, and assuming those are satisfied, once they're satisfied, the sale agreement will be consummated.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
Do we have any sense of how long it would take us to negotiate all these conditions?
You have agreement, I believe this agreement that you're authorizing tonight has 120 days to complete all the necessary transactions.
Okay.
Assuming the resolution goes forward, I have some ideas for disposition of the proceeds that we can introduce at the next meeting.
Yes, that's good.
Okay. Assuming it passes.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that. I think that's going to be a lively discussion for us. Mrs. Zucker.
Yeah, I thought this through a lot, because as I was reflecting on this, everyone whose father said all knows it's been a very long-running issue. It actually began before I got on the school board nine years ago, so that's how long it has been going, and throughout that time period, it's been polarizing. I think we've all heard people say that we should have sold it long ago, we've heard people say we should never sell it, and some say that we're doing just the right thing. So, I mean, we've heard it all. But there've been many good reasons for giving this issue such careful consideration over the years. First of all, the stables and land were actually deeded to the school district by the Severance Millikan family, am I that right? Yeah. Which is, in my mind, is a clear, magnanimous, and unambiguous statement of the importance city leaders of the time period felt about the role of public education in the master planning and future of the city. And I just talked about supporting your schools, I think that was a great way to show it. Number two, shrinking the physical footprint of the district should never be decided upon capriciously. And number three, the privatization of public land is a decision that should always be given careful thought. In this regard, I'm proud of my colleagues, both the ones who are sitting here tonight and the ones I've served with in the past for the depth of thought and gravity, they've shown this issue. Throughout these years, this school board, those school boards have always, in every single instance, acted in good faith. Over the years, we've offered creative solutions. One of the more recent ideas was, we offered what amounted to a 50-year lease at a dollar per year, with the only salient stipulation being that the LSE would invest in improvements to the building that they would need anyway in order to bring the building to their usable level. So what's different now from my perspective is that the city of Cleveland Heights, despite the difficult economic times, has offered to provide financing for this private entity. From this action, I can only conclude that the city officials feel that the completion of this deal is a critical component to achieving some master plan they have for the city, that Millikan is a key piece in their master plan puzzle. So my feeling is that if the board does decide to approve this deal, it will be, in part, in a show of goodwill to the city of Cleveland Heights. And so, I hope that they and all of you will remember this spirit and this gesture as we all work together in the future.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make a comment or question? Okay, you want to say something?
I hadn't really prepared anything, but I guess what I would say is that, what you'll all hear in a moment, that I will be voting to support this. But my reason being that I think that for the community and for the district, it's the right decision. I believe that having that building be used for education and not be vacant or partially vacant any longer is an excellent thing. So, I will be supporting the sale of the property. And I agree, Cal, this has been something that we've worked on a lot, we've spent a lot of hours on, we've spent a lot of energy on, and I hope that this goes forward. I honestly don't know, because we don't know how everyone's going to come out with the vote tonight, but I hope that it does.
I would also echo in terms of just the gratitude to everyone on the staff who has worked long and hard over, as you say, not just my tenure on this board, but over the years well before that, and everybody who has been involved in keep coming back to the table, keep coming back to the table, keep coming back to the table, to see if we can find some way forward. And that took some courage and perseverance and patience, and I'm grateful for everybody who took part in that.
Okay, great. Well, I've been with this from the beginning, and I think it's great that we're at a point now that we are wrapping up the sale. And I think, to me, us holding on to those stables was really a key thing that we wanted to get done from the standpoint of the usability involved in those stables. So, I think it is a win-win, and I think we all should be very happy. I think it's important to the community. I think NASA's idea that we're keeping it as a school is really important, and the idea that we have some land there that's key for us in terms of us having some flexibility in terms of the choices that we make as we undergo this big facilities project. So I think it's just a really good day and a really good deal for us. So, I'm real happy about it, and I think Dana might have a thing or two that she'd like to say.
Yeah, I just want to clarify what I said earlier, because while everyone was talking, I thought I'd go back to the agreement and double-check, because it can happen either way, and I thought it was set up one way. There will not be another resolution for the sale. The way the agreement words is that the sale will be, as long as all of the conditions are met, within the 120 days the sale proceeds.
Okay.
I just wanted to...
So that's just, it would just be administrative details from here on in.
Administrative detail, but I thought you should know that before the vote.
Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. Anything else? Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Upstain.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Okay. The resolution passes, and I think, I must say that we are not prepared to have a further conversation on how to best use the proceeds. We all know that we would be using it to participate in some capital project related that's of significance for us, and hopefully, it can be leveraged to make some things happen that are really necessary as far as the facilities project is concerned. So, let's move on. We have items C, 1 through 5, I believe we can take those together. I'll accept a motion. These are all personnel items. I'll accept a motion to approve those items.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Dixon, is there anything here that we need to, you need to address?
No. And we have Mr. Lombardo, if we have any questions, he's here to address them.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, Mr. Gaynor, would you call the roll?
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Okay, the purpose of this meeting tonight is our normal monthly meeting to discuss facilities. And tonight, we're actually moving along, and we actually look at some schematic design ideas, and I think we're continuing in the phase. But anyway, there's a lot of progress that has been made since our last meeting, and I think Mr. Shigalis is prepared to have our team come forward and share with us the progress that has been made. And I just want to note that we agreed that we would have an opportunity at the end of this presentation for members of the audience to speak up, and given five minutes per person, we might be here for a little while. I think we've got somewhere in the teens already signed up. And so, we're going to encourage people to stay to their time, be succinct, you know, and we do it where Mr. Gaynor will keep time, and he will, you can, he will give you a signal when it's time, because I can't actually see him. And so, what's happening is that the people who did sign up, Mr. Shigalis has that list, and he's going to call the names. When you, your name is called, your clock starts, so be ready.
And just to be clear, Ron, unless anyone wants to disagree with me, I'm assuming that everybody who's signed up to speak is here to speak about the facilities and schematic design. This is not a regular school board meeting, the conference. So, at the regular meeting, you can, if you've signed up for something other than that, please wait till the regular meeting, because this is a little bit of a different thing that we've done, allowing this public comment as part of the facilities process.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Register. So, very quickly, just a couple of quick introductions. On the end is John Orsini from BSHM Architects, and he's going to be leading the primary presentation tonight. Next to him is Amy Yurko, is back with us this evening, and Amy is from Brain Spaces, and she helped us throughout the developing the program of requirements phase of the work. And many of you in this room, I'm sure, are familiar with Amy and have worked with her. We also have Fred Rogers from the Ozan Gilbane team is here. And sitting in and pinch-hitting for Steve Zanoni, who is vacationing this evening, is Pat O'Brien from PMC as representing the owner's rep team. So, that's who's here. I would say very quickly that this is a work in progress, and so, these are not finished plans in any way, shape, or form. We will be coming back again for another meeting in September. We'll take another look, where we've done further development, had further input, further discussions. So, it's wonderful that we have such a large audience tonight, and so many individuals who want to speak on this. This kind of feedback is exactly what this meeting is designed for and is important for us to hear. So, with that, I will turn it over to John and let him take us through the presentation, and then we'll have some discussion with board members, then we'll turn to the audience.
Thank you. Just so everybody is familiar with the process, we met about a month ago here, and since that time, we met with the cabinet, the board, as well as all the user groups to discuss the plans as they currently stand. Plans develop after each meeting, so there's modifications based on comments from all users and all groups. In regards to sort of the direction of the project, there were some key things that, you know, that we just want to reiterate. One is to renovate and repurpose the 1926 wings and to maintain as much of the integrity of that part of the building as possible, as well as other areas like the auditorium. So, with that being said, there were some modifications made to the plans after our discussions. Most occurred on the second and third floor. They were a result of sort of comments from board, from cabinet, and from the user groups. So, we'll start by looking at what we're calling the Washington level.
And John, before you go through, I just want to acknowledge one thing for the sake of the audience. I recognize that, and I apologize for the fact that it is very difficult to see these plans from that screen. And I've already noted that with our IT department, and for the September meeting, we will have a larger screen that will make it much easier for viewers to see, even if you don't have a copy of this. So, I apologize for that.
But they have the handouts.
There are a bunch of handouts out there, so I did not anticipate as many, so I'm sure there were short a few, but...
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So, the Washington level is, it's developed over the discussions with all the user groups, like we had said. For the most part, it's very similar in plan to what we saw last month when we were here. You know, it still contains all of the major PE spaces, as well as the CTE, auto, and high base spaces. There are a couple of cosmetology, as well as some of the sound and performing arts are also located on this level. When we go up to the Cedar level, which is the first floor, this is pretty much as we had discussed last time. Cedar, as we could see, the color sort of represent, you know, sort of program areas. We still maintained the idea of conferencing center near the east entrance, as well as administration. As you go along the street that runs horizontal on the page, you have all major spaces off of that. Media, as well as student commons. In the center is the existing auditorium. And then, as you go to the west, towards the stadium, is where we have the overlooks into the main competition gym. Also, in this part of the building, in 1926, is where we have the special education because of needs for access to that building. When we go north onto the, north in the building, we have really a wing of music and vocal arts. That includes, to the far, to the far left is our band room, you know, a jazz room and an orchestra room, as well as associated spaces across the hall from that. This also allows access into the seating area for the auditorium. To the right of the north corridor is some of the CTE, the culinary, as well as a classroom. And something that we've been discussing within the board and the cabinet was sort of a mini auditorium. So what happens on this floor is, there's a lot of assembly, there's community use, as well as use of students. So this is a floor that everybody could use and gather in. The other advantage to this floor is that all major spaces are located off of sort of a central corridor, so when things are happening within the building, it allows the school or any user groups to utilize rooms like student commons for gatherings after activities. As we proceed up to the second floor, this is where some modifications have been made. We had discussions with the user groups, and this is really academic core space that we're talking about on these floors, as well as CTE. What ended up happening was, we talked about clusters of classrooms. We also talked about the idea of potentially science being located together. So we'll talk a little bit about that. We have, in the south part of the building, in the 1926 wing, we really have a lot of academic space, as well as science. Each wing has the ability to have interdisciplinary activities going on with the use of project labs, as well as relationships between classroom spaces. And that's sort of the idea behind the cluster. When we get to the center of the building, as we had said in the last meeting, you know, a lot of this focuses on the tower as being central to the plan. Yes, sir?
Can I ask a favor?
Yeah.
We don't have a pointer, so they may not...
Sue, you want me to go up there?
Well, or you can point out those colors, or somehow, I don't know if people really know where we are.
Hang on, we may have a pointer here.
Oh, good.
Amy always has a pointer. There is no doubt. I'm lying.
Here we go.
Thank you.
He was faster.
Okay, so here, so we're talking about cluster, right? This is the cluster, and what we have is, we have the potential use of academic core spaces, as well as science. So each cluster can have that sort of interdisciplinary, you know, activity going on, with these rooms down here being project labs. By project labs, what we're talking about is the ability for either a class to have a special project, or potentially two classes to collaborate on an idea, so they can go to those classrooms. When you come to the center of each floor, the tower, below the tower, becomes locations for lockers, as well as for students who potentially gather. Adjacent to each of those spaces would be administration. Each floor has areas for administration. And just so everybody knows, that plan is mirrored on both sides, as well as on the third floor. As we proceed to the north part of the building, is where we located CTE. Now, back there, there's also stairs that can connect you to the other floors, which would bring you down to music, and which would bring you up to the third floor for some additional academic core. These spaces are pharmacy, exercise science, and health and human services, as well as the CTE administration. So that's the concept for that second floor. When we go to the third floor, this is where you'll start to see the change. As we discussed, you know, this idea of a cluster is repeated on this floor. The other thing that happens is, we were able to locate science along a corridor that runs north and south, and it's also adjacent to other science wings, because I know that the science department wanted that relationship. So we were able to accommodate the idea of being close to each other, as well as being part of a larger group of teachers that teach other subjects. What happens in the north part of this floor plan is, we were able to develop another cluster. So it really gives the district the ability to have areas of interdisciplinary teaching, as well as activities, you know, between departments. To visually connect this floor and CTE, on this floor, we were able to open up a floor space that allows a visual connection. Also on this floor is where we located art, which is currently located, I believe that's the freshman experience space that's happening right now. So that's where we have art, which, for those of you that haven't been up there, the space has a series of vaults. It was originally, I believe, the cafeteria for the 1926 building, so it's really a special space. So, the idea of that being sort of a studio was advantageous to the program that we developed for the arts. It also allows light to be brought in from above. You know, lighting in spaces like this, you know, you talk about north light, because of the existing condition, we were able to introduce light that's coming in from shared spaces, potentially through the use of skylights or light tubes from above. So that's some of the thoughts on lighting there. On the fourth floor, I'm sure that I would think that most people have been to the fourth floor. It's sort of small, but there's some really special spaces up there, and we're maintaining the original idea of what that floor should be, which was vocal music. We were able to introduce some ensemble rooms, as well as a small library, and then support spaces for that, offices, individual practice rooms, and stuff like that. So that's sort of the development of the plan that's happened the last month. As you can see from the last month, you start to see the development of, the further development of spaces in regards to the program that was developed in the winter and the spring. So, you notice that here, you'll, you really start to notice it when we go to the first floor in regards to administration, as well as some of the music spaces, because those spaces are important in regards to the relationships. You know, our next step in regards to plan and these spaces are, you know, we talked with the users, now we sit down and really sort of get into the idea of what, you know, in regards to this space, what the administration wants in regards to relationship between offices and relationship between other program spaces. So that's sort of the next step, and that'll happen in the fall. So the last thing that we started to do was look at this in regards to its presence on Cedar. So, it was, you know, we spent a lot of time discussing it with both the cabinet and with the board about how we approach, you know, opening up the courtyard and introducing additions to the 1926 wing. And what we ended up doing was, we tried to maintain the integrity of 1926 by, you know, sort of replicating the ideas that was in, you know, this portion of the building. So you can see that this element to the right is the addition, and that's a project lab. The other thing that happens on these floors is that we have elements of circulation at each end of the corridors that we developed. So we tried to figure out a way to introduce those in regards to, you know, the existing architecture. And what we ended up coming back to each time was the element of entry at the tower. And that has a sort of a limestone colonnade and arch, and that's where the development of this space started. The other thing that we appreciated about this piece was the openness in the amount of glass that was in there. So with that being said, we were able to still maintain an open stairway, so that when you're driving down Cedar, and when students are running up and down these steps, you can see them, because that's an idea here that we've always had, was that this school is now visible from the inside out and from the outside in. So there's that element of openness in regards to seeing students walking up and down the And as we know, this facade is mirrored based on the center of the tower, so each side is identical in its architecture. Now, we start to get a little bit of change down here, but we're working through that, and that's because of grade. So these are, this is sort of looking straight on, you now see, you know, you now see something that hasn't been seen probably since 1958, which is that element, which we all appreciate. This is looking, and this is the area that I'm talking about, that grade sort of wraps around here, but you can see how scale played a lot of role in regards to the development of this space. of this space. So this, this form right here is almost the same size as the original wing. So you have that idea of that sort of scale and that was really important because we did look at, you know, what happens if you bring brick all the way across, if you've got to be squatty. So, and we were concerned about that. And then finally, this is looking at the other east academic wing. So down here is where you have your conferencing center. This is nursing or the, the health office which allows for easy access. And then you can see the relationship of this to the central tower, to the other element over there. So there's sort of a balanced thing going on here. And that's, that's where we are right now. And that you can see is how we started to look at the ends of circulation. And if, and if anybody, I know nobody here remembers what happened prior to 1959, but in plan, there was always an element at the ends of the 1926 wing that was of circulation. So there were stairs there and there was, there was windows looking to the outside. So.
I think that completes our presentation.
Yes.
I'd be taking questions.
Well, I get, I, I assume that you're here to answer questions, just answer questions, you don't have a formal presentation. I always like to hear more detail behind how you got from the last step to this step working with all of the different groups. I mean, you gave a little brief review of that, but I'd like to hear somebody, and I don't know if that's you, Amy, or you, John, talk a little bit more about that.
Well, when, you know, one of the key things was the development of the second and third floors and the idea of relationships. A lot of it had to do with departmental relationships and the idea of both, and I think I, I briefly touched on this, the idea of both the ability for one department to be together as well as to be part of other departments. And that's how this idea started. So there was, there was a desire for science to be together, yet there was also a desire for science to be included in this idea of a cluster of classrooms. So that's how that started to develop. The other thing that we started to do was, we started to look hard at, at what can fit in the 1926 wing. And what we ended up having here was the, the teacher's area with its associated program as well as two additional classrooms. So the thought was to add additional classrooms to this space. Now that started to talk about the relationship between classrooms and resource rooms and we were able to include resource rooms right along with other classroom spaces. Now some of the resource rooms have, I think two of them have a function associated with science. So that's how that started to, to progress and that's how this, this plan started to, to sort of develop. The other areas were, when we go to, when we go to music, you know, music is, there's a lot of, of sound issues associated with music and there's relationships associated with, with larger spaces to assembly rooms as well as, you know, sort of offices to the overall focus of this, this area of the building. The other thing that happened here was, you know, the desire for, for music to have its, you know, because of, because of what they do and because of how they utilize instruments and storage room, they really needed to be in close proximity to each other. So that started to develop this as a circulation space as well as a sort of a cluster for music. The other, the other opportunity that we had here was the behind the stage presence and we're still talking about this and we're still talking about how we access stage in regards to finished floor because as we all know, you know, the auditorium slopes down and it's, it's six foot six below floor here and then the stage is up three feet. So there's some, there's some opportunity there that, that we're trying to work through. But what we do have is we have the backup house open, part of it as a scene shop, which, you know, I'm sure that everybody's been over here into that little scene shop that's like six feet in the ground. Right now, it's really a goal to have scene shop adjacent to the stage as well as black box, which black box could be utilized as a black box, which is a, and Amy would probably be better describing what a black box is, but it's a performance space that really is open. It's open in regards to seating, it's open in regards to lighting, and it's open in regards to how you want to utilize the space. So it's, it's about, not necessarily the space, but it's about the users. But what can happen if there's a large performance going on here, this can become backup house. This can become something that's utilized during this performance as, you know, if they put curtains up, it could be changing rooms, it could be, you know, where, where scene is set up. So those are the kinds of things that we talked about in the last month. The other thing is, is sort of this area here and we didn't talk as much with administration, but the idea of administration and conferencing being close to each other and being adjacent to some sort of entry. You know, library or I think it's called media center, you know, media center has direct relationships between its circulation desk and views into the space, views into who comes in and views into at least one of the computer labs. So those are how, those are how this space is starting to develop. I hope that helped you out, Nancy.
Yeah, I guess we'll get into it a little bit as we have conversation about, I think, I think this is also the place where the rubber starts to meet the road in terms of all of the, the back and forth and when people start seeing actual ideas, it's rarely yay, it's usually ew. And so I, you know, I, I guess I'd like to hear how you've worked through that process with the different working groups too and the staff, a little, say a little bit more about that too.
Okay.
Excuse me. The, you know, it's all a process.
Yeah.
And, and so every iteration of the plan is a result of comments and criticisms and ideas from the various groups and of course their ideas get, need to get balanced with the other working group ideas. So, you know, there's a domino effect every time you want to make something different.
And the budget and the square footage.
And so part of it is to, to, to listen and hear all of the, the reasons why behind the criticism so that as we go back to the drawing board, we can re-knit the thing back together in a way that solves that why, not necessarily that we can take the actual suggestions and incorporate them verbatim because that's, it needs to incorporate, you know, all of them all together. And so, you know, we take the comments from the user groups very seriously and have through the whole process. Again, you might not see the comments exactly as they were made, but again, juggling everything and as you guys know, all the way from the very beginning and the Lego exercise, how difficult of a puzzle this is. And, and so we're find, trying to find ways to achieve all of the goals that people are talking about, the working groups are talking about. And that might mean some joint use spaces, some, you know, this kind of space may transform to that in the evening, you know, as John just mentioned. And, but to, to be able to look at all that, the functions that were requested and say, yes, we can do that, yes, we can do that, yes, we can do that, we think that we're getting closer and closer. And it can need the continuing input of the working groups to help us, you know, even get that much closer still. It's a normal part of the process, you know, we, we try ideas and we, we get some right, we get some wrong and we keep honing in until, until the alignment is, is achieved.
Thank you.
Yeah, is that, if I'm remembering correctly from last time, one of the big changes being, I believe on the second, certainly on the third floor, would be the, from the last plan, up on the north end of the building, there were also horizontal hallways, right? There was more.
That's correct.
So obviously you have, I mean, that seems to me like the biggest change is just moving all those classrooms down, most, many of those classrooms.
That is the biggest change and they, the classrooms that, that were in this area here, just so you know, some of this space is utilized for high base space for orchestra, jazz, and band. But the spaces that were here and here were moved into these spaces because 1926 is a big building still. And there was a lot of square footage in there that we had to maintain and utilize in regards to academic core, which is important because academic core is why this building was built. The other space that it went to was on the third floor, when you start to introduce the idea of both a connection between one, one discipline of teaching as well as being part of sort of a larger whole like Amy was saying. So that's why that wing sort of went away.
Also it was more efficient.
Yeah, and this is a, this is a more efficient plan.
That's what I was gonna say, yeah, I mean, it decreases the amount of hallways, which we were talking about, I mean, hallways are necessary but drive costs up and.
And also if you go from this space to this space, it's a lot closer than if you go from here over to here.
Right.
Which, you know, I know Eric, you went to this school and you know how it is to, to sort of man your way around there. So if we can tighten the plan up, that helps everybody.
And I think, I mean, and obviously that's gonna save us some money as well, I mean, every square footage decrease obviously helps us out that way. And I, I also know that we're getting into, as the plans get more and more detailed, it's easier and easier to come up with actual projections of how much everything's gonna cost. And so as we start to run into what our outer limits are, which I assume is now, I mean, we're starting to find those things out, do you have any rough sense of how, how much more this is going to need to change based on just practical things of cost and square footage and things like that? How, I, I know we're gonna continue to see changes, that's been very clear that this is, this is still in flux, but do you have a sense of how, is this like 80% of what's gonna be there, 90%, 40%?
Well, what we know, there are some things that, that we know we're going to maintain and one is the idea that we have going on here, all right? We're going to, you know, we know that this works really well in regards to everybody that's sitting here, in regards to, to the people that worked on the program, to the architects, to the board, to the administration and to the students. We think that this is really strong, this idea. Now whether this is, you know, this is a science room and this is a classroom, you know, those are further discussions that we'll get into. The other thing that we know is that, you know, because of, because of site, we know that this is going to be sort of an assembly area, this whole zone here, right? We know that student commons and, and media center are gonna sit there and competition gym's gonna be there. And, and really because of site, you know, a lot of this layout in regards to some of these high base spaces are a result of site. We know that we like sort of the CTE high base space in this area because of its ability to be accessed, because that's important for that function. You know, we have to be able to get cars in and out of there, it's as simple as that. We also know that because of, because of pool and because, just so everybody knows, when you build a pool inside a building, it's almost like there's a separate building here. So there'll be a little one inch space between this, this building and this one. So because of that, it's nice that this sits over there. So things like that aren't going to, you know, we don't think that things like that are going to change too much. The other thing is accents, access from the south of the, the building to the north of the building. Because we have this, we have our beautiful auditorium that we're fortunate to have, we need circulation on both sides of it. And that's why the plan started to sort of develop into this. We have circulation there, why are we not using it? And that's where you start to get into further development. You know, we take big ideas and we work from architects, we, we start out with the big picture and then we work down to minutia. And that's sort of how we go and we're sort of still in the beginning phases, but that's sort of how it is. So every time we come back, there's going to be changes and, and there's going to be modification and it's going to be further developed.
Yeah, I wanna, if Eric doesn't mind, I wanna tack on to that question just a little bit. And the question that, I, I'll have others, but the question that I would raise at this point is if we think about what we're looking at now, how does this relate to the POR in terms of square footage? Where are we in terms of this versus the square footage, the POR, the program of requirements? Do we know?
Yeah, we know where we are.
Tell us.
Remember that when we did the POR, we were looking at net area. And so when you're looking at net area, you see the spaces that are colored, not the gray spaces.
Right.
So when we, we planned the building, we said what spaces are needed for education and then as the architects continue to work on the plan, you, you determine the gross areas or the spaces for hallways and stairways and things like that. So, so we need to be sure that we're comparing those, you know, sort of apples to apples. If we were go, to go through the, the list of program spaces in the program of requirements, I think we're pretty close.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty close. And I'll tell you, there are two areas that we're not. And one is the auditorium. The auditorium was programmed to be, I believe it was programmed as a new space. When we maintain the existing auditorium, that added square footage. And the same thing, well, you.
Yeah, and, and keep in mind there too, that we were programming the building as, as what are the needs for each space. And once we have the, the needs, pretty much without regard for the existing building, this is what we need. If we were to build new, this is what we need, this is our, this is what we're aiming for. And all the functionality that was requested in, say, the auditorium resulted in a space that's actually smaller than the auditorium you currently have. Once we then take the program of requirements and apply it into the real building, we, we, some spaces will need to get bigger because they're existing, it doesn't make sense to chop, you know, a couple thousand off of, you know, off of, of the auditorium. And, and some places, places might need to get a little smaller because they just don't fit in the building. So we started from what are we aiming for? And then we know that in any existing building, we have parameters that we need to satisfy. Some of them will get bigger, some of them will get smaller. And so there are very, very few of them that are largely different, but the ones that are, are quite largely different.
Yeah, and auditorium and art is another one that, that's larger than, than the POR says. And the reason for that is because the space was sort of perfect for the function. Now there's other, you know, we're, 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 as you can tell, we, we're further investigating areas of this plan and this is one of them. And the reason art is in the whole space is because this floor, the third floor as we see here, has two levels. You know, the art level is about, I think, three and a half feet above the rest of the floor. So to not, not use that as one program or one discipline starts to sort of muddy things up. So that's just an example as to why art is bigger.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, on this particular point, I would probably push a little bit because the, as far as I'm concerned, the question is fairly straightforward and I think Eric was asking where, what can we expect in terms of change? Now, if we are not on target as far as the POR is concerned, then that would represent potentially some change, right? Is that, I mean, is that the way to think about this?
I think the answer is unequivocally yes.
Right.
The, the straightforward answer to your question is that, that the current plan that you are looking at, the current iteration of the schematic plan is, has too much square footage in it to support, to be supported by the budget that we have.
Okay, that's, that's really, I mean, so what, what we can expect, that what we, as we move forward and just going back to Eric's question, we can expect some modifications to try to get aligned.
We have to reconcile, we have to reconcile that there's too much square footage. You know, they're giving you good reasons why, you know, it's, it's based on, on, you know, trying to work within the framework of the existing building. We anticipated that that was gonna happen, it's not anything that we didn't know was going to happen. Now we've got to reconcile that and that's the next phase of work that we've got to go through.
Yeah. And that may mean, you know, tightening up some of this space in regards to circulation because, you know, like Amy said, you know, we're pretty much on target except for those few spaces that we mentioned in regards to square footage. And, you know, we can't, you know, the classroom spaces are classroom sized and those are based on state and we're, we're at a very comfortable size, you can't get much smaller than that. It's a great size, you know, we're at about 850 square feet, which is about average in the state. So, you know, things like that are, are something that, that we're looking at. So, and. So, and, and just so everybody knows, this happens on almost every project we go through this. How do we tighten the plan, how do we still make it functional in regards to the users?
And we've done that all along the way. Because even at the programming phase, we were looking for ways to double up on spaces. We were, we were talking about, for example, the whole conference center came about because of all the various conference activities that are needed in the school. So we look at, looked at sharing that and probably, you know, saved a couple thousand square feet by doing that. So it's, we have an eye towards that budget all the way through. And so every step of the, of the way, that gets revisited over and over and over again until we get to the, to the real final plan that again hits everything that everyone's aiming for, hopefully.
Sorry, Erica, I wanted to push that just a little bit. But I, I'll tell you, that would be something that as we move forward, I'll probably bring up every single time. And at some point, you know, like, I guess you're saying that we're about eighty percent or whatever the number is, I, I don't know exactly what it is. But at some point, we'll push a little bit more and say, okay, what, where are we in relationship to what we have approved in the POR? So anyway.
And keep in mind, I don't mean to keep going back and forth, but keep in mind too, that the idea of, of keeping the theater, and that's just using it as an example, is, goes beyond the square footage into historic significance and the emotional connection and all those things. So sometimes you could, you, things need to be measured in, in assets that go beyond.
Yeah, we're prepared for that, we, but, but, you know, we wanna start.
I hear ya.
You know.
And I would just also, as a building owner, just one tiny more second. You know, we will bring, Gil Bain Building Company is contractually obligated to bring back to the board a budget for your consideration that, or a, a cost estimate that falls within our budget. So, so they have their work cut out for them and, and they've been sitting at the table with the architect and with everyone all along. And, and so we've got to get there.
Fred's gonna speak up. You're a quiet man, Fred, we want to hear from you.
So I know my time is coming. Just so you know, on the, in the SD venue, we look at square footage and lineal footage analysis of the building because everything's not really developed on the inside. So we've been looking at gross square footages with the designers and also the exterior skin footage. Because we're putting historical data to that and that's feeding information to them, let them know that you, you may need to reduce the lineal footage or amount of, of exterior skin and also interior square footage based on our historical data of, of square foot cost. So we're feeding in, we're, we're like the buy humbug guys, so we're telling them, buy humbug, can't, can't do it, so, sorry.
Quite a bit of perimeter was, was reduced from last time to this time.
Yeah, when we went to, when we went to this schematic, we did reduce a lot of skin.
Erica, you.
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I, I got a couple of things. You know, I raised the issue of toilets last time. I, I'm not sure that we've solved that yet, but I, I'd like to hear you talk about that a little bit. And I think about it in terms of the crowds that we might have at a concert or something like that. It still looks like we are fairly limited or, or, well, that's the question.
Well, that's okay, because we'll talk about that a little bit. If we're talking about a concert, let's say that we're on this level.
Right.
Okay, on this level, we maintained one of the existing toilet rooms that are located in the corner of the nineteen twenty-six building. We went back and added probably about the same amount of fixtures near the entrance and near the main circulation path to the north part of the building. The other thing is.
Since the last one, yeah.
Yeah, since the last one. The other thing is that we, we maintained, in fact, we made these even larger in regards to the toilet rooms located back here. So there's probably, I can't quite remember the count in these toilet rooms, but there's, there's proximity to toilet rooms in, in sort of all parts of this area. Because if you're, if you have something going on in here, granted, you know, we're talking about egress from this, but there's also, if you go here and you go down to the, to the Washington level, there's toilet rooms down there also. And if you're in these spaces, you have access to that toilet room and to that toilet room. Because if, if we talk about public spaces on this floor or large assembly spaces, you have the auditorium, you have the student commons, you have a mini auditorium and you have potentially a black box. So you have those spaces that all right around here and you have access to three different locations for toilets.
So you're happy that we.
Yeah, I think, I think that we, I think that we meet the, the requirements and we, we give opportunities in, in close proximity to where, to where the, the performances or where the assemblies are happening. And the same thing if you go to the floor below, you know, the floor below, as well as all the locker rooms that you have going on, but there's toilet rooms down there also and there's a group over in here. So, and, and if we, if we remember our discussion with the main competition gym, there is the ability to have a relationship from this floor to this floor right here. So people that are sitting in these bleachers are able to come up and utilize these toilet rooms. That's a valid concern.
Yeah. If you think about the competition gym, does that mean that we would have, I guess we would have toilet spaces down there as well?
Yeah, you have two toilet spaces on that floor and then you have, you know, depending on how the school wants to operate, if they want to maintain this street as being open during those, those games. If not, you know, you at least have this toilet room there in the upper part. Because I don't, you know, people would use this one, they may come down here and use this one. I doubt if they're in this competition gym that they would come up here.
Right. Just a question about security, you're actually moving security, I guess. And it's, I can, I guess we can see it on the.
Yeah, security.
Cedar level, which means that in terms of the entrance to the building, we're thinking about forcing a different entrance, right?
Yes, we're.
And, okay, can you speak to that a little?
Yeah, what we, you know, what, conceptually, we talked about the idea of this street, right, or this avenue and the idea that, that we're bringing the tower entrance back.
Right.
But we also have, you know, we have sixteen hundred students coming to this building every single day. And right now, they all enter the building, I think, right about where I have the red dot. And they come up the steps and they go through this little door. So what we were trying to do was introduce a main student entrance, which occurs on the east side of the building, which has a little more site access than the west side. So that's why we located it over there. The other thing is, is that it's, it's centrally located, I mean, it's closer to, to Cedar, but everybody knows what, what we're talking about, between Washington and, and Cedar. So that students, if they for some reason get dropped off on this street, they can just walk down here and go midpoint. And if they get dropped off on Cedar, they're also close. The other thing that we, we're starting to talk about, and this is with how the building's operated, is sort of a secondary security location so that kids could enter through the tower and through the entrance as it was supposed to be. So once again, it reinforces the importance of not only the tower, but this whole space that is hidden right now.
Now, we look at that space as it is right now.
This space?
Yeah, where the, you see where the security is?
Right here? Where this go?
Well, you, you only have one security, right?
Yeah, we have security located here and then we have a secondary.
I think, I think Ron, what you're looking at is possibly a tent, like a portable or small area where someone could be housed of security right there.
Right there, yeah.
It doesn't necessarily mean a space.
It doesn't mean a space, that's.
It's not like an office, it's a desk, right?
But the idea is that, that the school can start to utilize this as student entry.
Because that's, that's a key, almost a fulcrum, so from that, if you're standing at that point, theoretically, you can look into the cafeteria and the commons, you can see the main, you can see the primary entrance, you can see the Cedar entrance and you can also see down the hallway if there is a, for after-school events, if there's a basketball game or something like that.
Right, yeah, right there, you're, you're absolutely right Eric, because you have views to all of these entries. Because during a basketball game, you know, this is probably going to be used, especially since people are, are, you know, some people are parking over here in the parking garage. So this becomes also a relevant entrance in regards to not only everyday use, but uses for basketball, uses for, you know, plays and musicals and, and anything else that happens in the auditorium space.
Erica, you.
Yeah, last time I said I was disappointed, this time I'm very happy. So yeah, they are, much, much better. I've got a whole bunch of small little questions.
First of all, thanks for your.
Oh, yeah. That's why, that's why we get paid the big money. On the basement level, I would, a recommendation, I would change the phraseology of football locker room to.
Right.
Six in the locker room, because I think that's really more.
And that's the idea behind that anyways.
So that way, it's, it's not specific to one program, it's really whoever's, whoever's using the, the track and field complex. The elevator that's in the corner of the weight room, does that go to all four floors?
Yes.
So that's like a heavy-duty freight elevator?
Uh, well, we have a freight elevator.
But this is a freight, it's like, it's an elevator to go to the all four floors?
It goes to all four floors and, and, and it can be, it can be enlarged to be a freight.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure.
And I, I think that that would depend on, on two things. One would be art and the other would be scene shot.
Okay, so it's, it's more, it's a much bigger elevator than the one you currently have by the stairwell?
Yeah, the one that's over here?
Other stairwell.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's just a.
It's a passage elevator, okay.
It's big enough for a gurney to get in.
It's an ADA elevator versus a.
That's correct.
Okay. And also on the basement, have you had resolution if you're gonna need to have those stairwells that go from the basement level up to the courtyard, is that, has that code issue been resolved or?
No, that has not. And we, we, we did a thorough walkthrough through the building. So I'm uncomfortable right now saying that they will be gone. And it's only because of the existing space that's down there.
Can you show the audience what Eric's talking about?
When, when you go into these, I'm gonna go to the, the floor above. When, you know, when you're inside the courtyard, you see stairwells that come out through here and through here and it looks like they were added in the nineteen fifty-nine addition. And that's what Eric's talking about, trying to get rid of those because of what it did to the original building.
So we're still waiting to see if we can.
Yeah, we're still waiting to see on that, I, I, I don't want to say yes when. Yeah, it's egress.
Then you have a yellow, on the only thing that's yellow on the basement floor is called a learning center, what is it?
Well, the learning center, and that's a result of where it's located within the program. The learning center is for use, if students are, and just so everybody knows what we're talking about, we're talking about this space right here.
Is it like athletic study tables?
It's a study table, not necessarily dedicated to athletics, but for after-school use. If, if somebody's, you know, waiting on a sporting event or a sibling.
Gotcha.
You know, they could be in the learning center.
I think you could even call it, you know, homework center. I mean, you know, if you, it wouldn't be called that, but, so it could be used during the day or whatever. But, you know, where do you just park when you just, I've gotta wait for my, I'm gonna wait for my practice, I might as well get my homework done while I'm doing it. And part of that includes logging into a computer and so let me do it right here.
And that's why we really located it on this level adjacent to these spaces. Because these are the spaces that kids usually use after school. This and probably music. Music has the advantage of being on another floor where there's potentially adjacent spaces and assembly rooms. But that's why we located, located it there.
Erica, can I actually, before you move up the phone, I had one quick question. Just the, and just to be clear for folks, as we refer to this as the basement level, I mean, you refer to it as the Washington level.
Yeah, we call this Washington.
But just for people at home to understand and people in the audience, that the difference between this basement level and what we currently have basement level is that all of these areas will have windows. You'll never feel like you're in a basement, I mean, it's not like you're under the ground and too bad, that's where your office is. All those places down in the bottom left-hand corner will have access to sunlight.
Yeah, especially when you start to talk about these spaces here.
Right.
Well, the ones in the left, the ones on the left of the photo currently have, that's where the ADA, comparable to where the ADA is. But I would, in the illustrations you have in the perspective from the front, I would highly, I hope we're gonna go with light wells as opposed to a wall.
Yeah, no, we're not, we're, yeah, we'll, we'll fix that up, don't worry about that.
Yeah, and just.
You, you know, it's a process.
I, I know, I just want to make sure that we're not gonna, because I could see.
Yeah, no, no. Yeah, that becomes.
Yeah, problematic.
Just, just as to that point, if you look at that corner, that elevation from the outside that you have, you, you see those windows there, is that at that level?
Yes.
Yeah.
Those are at that level, right?
Yeah, that's at the, the Washington level.
Yeah, and.
And this line right here that you see on the building is the Cedar level.
Okay, and so if we, if we think about four floors, we, if we go to the center of the building, I guess the fourth floor is in the tower itself, right? It doesn't go anywhere else, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we sort of got four, but the way we got.
Really, we have five.
Right, there's five.
Okay, that's, that's.
We really have five, we have Washington, Cedar, second, third, and then fourth sits in here.
You have four floors and five levels.
Four floors and five levels.
But less ramps and stairs.
We're trying to get rid of ramps.
Yeah.
How many, what's our classroom count? What, what is the, do you have a?
We have forty-four classrooms, academic classrooms.
Academic classrooms compared, and how many do we currently have? I think they're, moving forward, if you can get back to us, I, I think there'd be value in comparison, again, it's sort of the, the POR. What do we currently have in regards to classrooms, to specialized spaces and then these sort of?
We, we have that started. We're starting.
We had that when we did the plan, the POR, I can probably look up some of that because we, because that was asked a lot as we were going through.
Because I think again, when we get, when we're, when we're specifically committing to something, we need to be able to support, vet support, explain why, if we're going from sixty-five classrooms down to forty or something like that, we need to be able to explain why the building's bigger and we have fewer quote classrooms, so that, I think that'd be valuable. Are you gonna be able to, is, is there a possibility to almost run a simulation of our current schedule in the, the building, if you understand, a simulation, is that?
Schedule of the day.
Of classes.
Exactly.
I think that I'm gonna have to ask somebody at the.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, because it would, like a, almost like a traffic simulation, but with.
Right, and often we are asked to, to do a schedule, sort of a test run, see how, see how it would go. There's certain, certainly, the, the rules of thumb that we use when we're programming take into account the typical American high school utilization rate. And, you know, we, we got into that sort of detail during programming, just so we'd make sure that what we do will work for the student population. And we're quite confident that it will, just based on the numbers that we were using. We're a little lower than the national average in terms of utilization, so that opens up the schedule a little bit. But it never hurts to get your scheduler, scheduling team to come and just do a, you know, do a, do a test run, just to see how it would, would go. My, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure they'll find that there's gonna be extra, a little bit extra. And that's to allow for future ability to run different programs that we haven't defined yet. You know, we talked a lot about how, how this building could be able to be viable and valid through into the future.
Well, again, I, one, we did something similar for that for the middle schools to justify when we went from three to two. I just want to make sure before we start putting up concrete and throwing up steel, steel, that we're not building over capacity, in particular, if we gotta cut a little bit on the budget. I'm even looking just right here, we've got these academic, there's a, three, there's on the side of the building by your, at the end of your east-west corridor, there's four floors of classrooms. And I'm thinking, well, if you're extra overcapacity, you could always just bump the wall back a little bit theoretically. But again, I, I think it's, I'm looking before we commit, that we know that it's going to work, that we don't have, we're gonna, we're gonna have that higher building utilization, but we still want that, that room for growth. But that we're not doing all this and then we still have the same classroom utilization, because that's the whole idea for the think tanks.
Good question.
The, we don't have, this evening, we don't, you don't have a massing model for the rear of the structure, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and we will have for the, the next one?
Yeah, we're working on that right now.
On the first floor, I would just, I would highly encourage, and I know you're thinking about it, but the main entrance is gonna be on the east side of the building. I think that needs, not just the, what it looks like on the exterior, I think that the floor, the floor plan right there, I think it needs a little bit more, I don't wanna say grandeur, but it needs to be a little bit more dramatic because I think that will be a, the primary entrance for most.
For most students.
For visitor, well, for students. For visitor, well, for students, for visitors, our ADA, that's gonna be our primary ADA accessibility points, I think that needs to be a little bit, a little bit more grant, a little bit grand, I guess. The, I know you're saying you're not, you don't like ramps, but I know we need ramps parallel to the auditorium for the, for fire exits. Are these ramps gonna go all the way to the basement, or are they just gonna go to the?
Well, and that's the discussion that we had last week in regards to the theater and how the theater, the auditorium performs. So, right now, they're going down to the stage level.
But you, they're, and stop, they're not gonna go all, they're not.
They're not gonna go, right now, they're not going all the way down.
Okay, that, because I was, that was always unclear, because it was sort of like, it was, we were hearing, oh, they're gonna go down to the floor, then I'm looking at the basement, I'm like, but they don't have.
Well, at one time, they did go all the way down, yeah.
Okay, we modified that.
Because of function.
Right, that's, I totally. The stairwells that are nineteen twenty-six, are those staying, or are we?
Those are staying.
Good, okay.
That's, just so everybody knows, that's, that's this one, which I believe there's an elevator, a couple of.
Yeah.
And then, and then that's this one.
Okay, because when we did a tour the other day of the building, that was one of the things, the amenities, even the consultant was like, this is a really nice feature of.
Yeah, they're beautiful.
Now, I guess the question I'll throw out, we have four, at least four nineteen twenty-six stairwells that will be going away.
That's, that sits right here.
Right, so you get two in the twenty-six, you got at least one in thirty, you got a couple back by the gyms as well. The balusters and the banisters and that kind of stuff, is there any value, is it, is there any value and possibility, like code, of pulling those from the demolition and?
The only thing that, that would be problematic with that is that the height of guard rail versus handrail, that's where I could potentially see that as being an issue.
Okay.
And what happens is typically, if you do something like that, usually it would be within the stairwell in its current location, but let's say there's a stair that sits over in here someplace.
Right, yeah.
Am I right in my location?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's that stair. If you were to take that and relocate it someplace, sometimes you have to retrofit the baluster. And that becomes potentially difficult and costly, but I understand the desire.
Because from the tour of the structure we had, it was, what I think was very useful and valuable for us as we went through, is that, to a high degree, whatever was, whatever they didn't, whatever they didn't trash in sixty-two, they did in seventy-two. So when you're walking down the hallway, pretty much all that is left is, is you get the tile floors, some of the baseboards, and then you go in the classrooms.
Yeah, some of the baseboards.
Some of the baseboards, and that's about it. There's very, very little, and then, and even the doorways.
None of this.
And even the doorways, you've got the doors, and there's the fluorescent paint, then there's the black paint, the transoms are all filled over, so there's very, very little that remains unfortunately, except for the floors and the baseboards. Again, in the hall, the stairwells was, again, one of the few areas that had retained, so that was why.
These stairwells, and, and these are there, you know, these, the stairwells I was talking about earlier are located right here.
Right.
Which was removed in fifty-eight or fifty-nine.
Yeah, those, those are gone when they built the science wing, so that was, that was sort of the question, was what components would, that was why.
You know, we, we went in and did our, you know, we walked around the building for about four hours last Thursday, and, you know, we were trying to see about utilizing the existing colonnade that's there. And because of the way that the original building was built with a, with a ramp that goes from here down six feet very steep, over, back up, and down and over.
Right.
Those just don't work because of where they are.
Right.
So, but we are looking at stuff like that.
Well, I know when we did, what was interesting when we toured, we were in the auditorium, you, the, I think the current thought in regards to the auditorium was a, I guess, when the phrase, because it's sort of say orchestra pit, and I think the, the thought was it was gonna be a very hard surface, sort of like Wiley's, where it's dug in, it has a very finite amount of purposes, I think the current thought was more of, let's say, I guess, a.
It's a, it's a spiral lift.
It would, it would sink, it would sink for a pit raised at floor level for current use, and then you could push it up for, like a thrust stage for the auditor, that's for performance. So right now, we're sort of looking at a multi-purpose orchestra pit. We really shouldn't, I guess we couldn't even call it a pit, it's really more of a multi-function.
Yeah, it, you know, the, the idea that we have with the pit right now is that it's, it's, it's not hydraulic.
Okay.
All right, which means that it's not as invasive in regards to construction.
Okay.
The only problem is that when you start to look at the, just so everybody knows, when, when auditoriums were built at this time, and even today, a lot of the, what we called conditioned air is brought from underneath the floor. So when you're in, and, and I'm gonna call it a basement, when you're in the basement of this, this building sitting right here, you're looking at what are called plenum spaces for bringing air into, into this, this large space. And what happens is that orchestra pit sits within all of those spaces. Now, you know, our, our mechanical engineers aren't thinking about using those for conditioning the space, but they're there. But what happens with this lift is you don't have to dig beyond the, the floor that's there. And that's it at the end.
Well, I guess what, what I'm, what I'm saying is, the consultant was saying, sort of, that you'd have, it would almost have three levels.
Yeah, you have three levels. You have a, a traditional orchestra pit.
Right.
Then you have the, the regular floor level that, that would be there, you know, during the day.
Right.
You know, would be, it would be, the, the finish would be the same finish as the rest of the floor in that room, and then you have the potential to bring it up to the level of stage.
So in reality, it goes from a single-purpose thing that would be for a handful of times of the year, to you have multiple uses.
So how does that, how do you accomplish that? You say you're not doing any hydraulics.
No, you're not.
Does that mean you got protocol stuff that you?
No, 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 it's a spiral lift, it just sort of.
Ah.
Okay. And I've, I haven't been able to use one before, but I had specified it in another project, so it's, it's very interesting. They have one, I know that, that if we do go that route, that, that it'll be something that we'll get information on locations. I do believe that there's one in Packard Music Hall in Warren, Ohio, if anybody's been to Packard. Packard put one in about, I'm gonna say, five years ago.
But, but something like this would allow us to address.
You address a lot of different needs.
It will, it also addresses multiple conflict, it addresses the concern of, okay, it's something to use only a handful of time of year, conversely, it's something that you can use, it, it maintains some of the integrity of the original design while at the same time adding functionality.
That's correct.
Now, one of the things I, I found from the tour, I guess it's more sharing with my colleagues, when the consultant was saying, I mean, when we were in the auditorium, that a lot, a significant number of the problems the space has, from an audio, audio component, what have you, are really the result of alterations and changes over time. So it's almost if you strip out the gunk that's been added over time.
Right, there's that bulkhead.
The bulkhead, the, the way the balcony's been altered, the acoustical tile at the back of the space, the, the paneling on the side where it used to be windows, all of those factors, if we sort of strip all that out, and then start thinking about, okay, we take that out, what do we wanna put back in, that, just stripping out the junk seems to address a number of the.
You know, hopefully, hopefully, you know, you mentioned the balcony, hopefully the, the balcony is still there. You know, that's, that's the, the sort of, I don't wanna call it dilemma, but that's, when you start to strip away those things, hopefully they maintain the balcony. And when I was there.
You mean architecturally?
Architecturally, but architecturally is also functionally, because right now, there's, I think it's a gypsum board product on it, and the original had plaster's with coffers, or, or some sort of wainscote, and the plaster reflected sound more than the gypsum board, because the gypsum board's a little softer.
But what, but what I think was very interesting for the folks I was with, was that the, the ability by, by stripping off the junk that we've added over time.
Yeah.
Actually, when going towards restoring some of the architectural detail, actually gets us a better space than we had, we've had for the last forty, fifty, sixty years. So I think that was, it was very comforting to hear that, okay, if we take off this, the stuff that we, that's mucked it up, this actually gets us a long way towards the things that we want to.
That's the same thing with the fly space.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, because the fly is, is really sort of awkward.
It was, it's basically, what were you thinking and why did you do it?
Right.
So, okay, second, the only real question I have on the second floor is gonna be, I know Nancy and I had spoken with you, the idea of the locker commons in the second, the center space. I guess, when I was running the numbers, I figured if a locker was one foot and you had four, four feet between, and you have, I think linear feet-wise, you could squeeze them in.
Yeah.
But I guess I'm just a little hesitant and concerned about having eight hundred to a thousand kids.
Right.
Two, three, four times a day, all congregating on that one juncture.
And, you know, you said that, and what we did, I went back and talked in my office, and what we thought of was, you know, we have cluster lockers, cluster lockers, maybe we introduce back here lockers, all right? So you have potentially five lockers. And then we also have areas like this that we can look at putting lockers in.
Yeah, because I.
So that's a, that's a development, but the idea is that maybe there's lockers in this area as well, because we know we don't want lockers the way they are now, where they're just sort of all over the place.
Well, and that was the thing, is I, I did like the office, administrative offices right next to where you have a large concentration of students, so it's a, more sets of eyes, but my concern was what, when I did the math, I'm like, okay, theoretically, I can see you can do it, but this isn't the gym locker room, it's, you want a little more breathing room.
And there, you know, there's clearances that are required and that kind of stuff, but this was, this would be the area that we would look at, another sort of locker bank, so that, so that you have, and the only disadvantage to this area over, over this is that, you know, you don't have this programmed element, which is administration adjacent to it.
Which, to a degree, to be.
Which is really nice, right?
Well, like, the flip side is, that's great, because it's getting you something we don't have. Conversely, if you put them where you don't have an office right next door, that's, that's status quo.
But what you do have back here is, is you have, you know, you have a, a sort of teacher's area, right?
Well, could, theoretically, I mean, I was looking at on the, what floor am I on, the second floor?
You're on the second floor.
On the second floor, we've got the, a whole series of CTE locker, CTE classrooms, so when you, you could theoretically, that, that's a, that's a cluster to a degree.
Right, oh, right, yeah, you do have that. And, and, and back, you know, in this part of the building, you also have a relationship to the floors above, with the stairwells and the openings. So we wanted to make sure, because the idea with CTE is that it's not, you know, back in the corner on its own, but that it's integrated throughout the building.
But my thought is, if you've got office, wherever there's offices, I think that's.
Yeah, oh, and here's CTE offices, so.
Exactly. Then my, on the third.
Slow down on the locker question. So, right now, we're talking about the lockers being pretty much confined to those areas on each floor?
Yes.
Okay. Do we, do we actually physically count though, I mean, in terms of how many lockers we, we have or how many we need?
We'll have a certain amount of lockers that we'll provide in the building. I don't know what, I don't know how many we're providing, there's, there's about seventeen hundred kids in the building.
I think we, we programmed eighteen hundred just for.
Okay, and that's included already?
The space of the locker takes up space, so we include that locker space in the net area, yes, time, you know, so it's about a eight, a foot and a half.
Okay, that's fine, I just.
And please tell me it's metal and not particleboard laminate, because I'm looking for something that's gonna have a little more durability. Well, I'm, no, I'm not talking recycling, no, 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 I'm just saying, the metal lockers, they may jam a little bit.
I think they're gonna be lucite, so you can see through them.
Oh, I. Yeah, they had a lot of lucite in nineteen twenty-six. On the third floor, the art, the only thing with the art space, I like the idea of the art classrooms there, because that was one of the things I would say, hey, you should put the art classrooms there. The only thing, two components, when I'm looking at this, the walls, front, the walls that frame it on the east and west facade, those are the current exterior walls, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I guess the one thought or possibility is if the hallways, the hallways that flank that space, if we could have a skylight, I think would be great, because that actually allows us to.
Yeah, you borrow light.
Okay. And then the other concern, I'm not a big fan of the stairway thing in the front, but, if we could go with more of a loft kind of a concept, more, even if the walls between some of the art classrooms.
Oh, I see, yeah.
If, if not the whole thing glass, then it'd be way prohibitive, but large expanses, that would be.
Yeah, what, just so everybody knows, what we were talking about within our office, when we started to develop this space, was the idea that these walls have a direct relationship to columns in those, in those rooms, because, you know, the, the, the one area that wasn't stripped was this, and the columns are there, the column capitals are still there, so you still have that. So the idea is, is that the walls go up to a certain point, and then maybe there's, because you may need a separation.
Right, right.
Maybe there's glass above, but the idea that this is the more open space.
Right, I think the more.
Because studios, you know, I, I don't know how many people in here actually worked in studios, I know, I know three of us in here had educations where we sat in studio spaces, but they're usually open, they're loud, they're a little louder. But the idea is nice that you're able to see what three-D arts and what jewelry are doing, because there is a relationship there in regards to not only teaching, but in regards to just art in general, and understanding of, of, you know, once again, you know, we talk about relationships of space, but relationship of, of materials and that kind of stuff.
Well, and that, yeah, I get, yeah, for the, when I, I like the idea, it's just, and I understand, obviously, we do need some walls for some of these programs, but I think the more we can make this area as light-filled as possible, it's gonna benefit from.
Loft-like.
Exactly, I think that'd be great. And then the only, the, the last item would be just from the, I mentioned the tour of the folks we went, the, and not the consultant, it was nice to hear her saying it, the, the main east-west hallways, because that's pretty much gonna be one of the few remaining, basically the floor service, I'm gonna pitch it again. It's a great feature, it's pretty much the only feature left in the building aside from the auditorium, so I think whatever efforts we can make to, on the main east-west hallway on the three floors, retain that, that I think would be, because pretty much everything else is either already gone, or is not likely to be salvaged. So I think if we can do that, that was, that'd be great, because it, it really is the only remaining detail in the, in twenty-six. So, those are, those are all my questions. But again, I'm much, I'm much, much happier than at the last meeting last, when I was.
Not as happy.
I was not as happy. I was, I was, I went from disappointed to not as very happy, so.
That's good.
But it's great, you know?
We made progress.
Exactly, so, those are, those are all my questions.
Just a quick question on, on the floors. You know, when we think about that space that ultimately becomes a display space for art and what have you, we would be bringing that throughout and at that level, right? You know that, the, the.
Like the gallery space? Are you talking to the tile?
Yes. You know, Eric, what, what is the floor?
Well, basically, well, I mean, basically, the east-west hallway, it's a, it's like a four-by-eight clay tile with, with a dark gray grout, I mean, basically the idea would be.
Right, right. I guess it's dark gray, I, I was wondering if it, if it's dark gray or dirty, but.
You know, I was just in there, those floors are pretty cleaned up right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and, well, the, at least for myself, and I think for the, for as far as trying to maintain the patina, you know, again, there's, there's, there's the renovated twenty-six or adjacencies, and then there's, let's say, everything north of that. At the very least, in, in twenty-six portion.
Right.
You know, obviously, we can't dig out the current tiles and reuse them, but I can't imagine it's hard to find a new clay tile that would match the old ones. It won't match exact, but as long as it has the same feel.
I think that there's, there's, there's similar product out there in regards to what we have now.
Exactly. And what I found interesting, because I was paying close attention, was where the stairwells used to be in twenty-six that they ripped out in, in fifty-eight, you really can't even see where they put the new tile in back.
Right.
Now, it's fifty years ago, so it wasn't new, it's not new anymore. But I, my feeling is that, so long as we reflect it, I think people will be happy. That's what we said we were gonna do.
Yeah, right. And some of those treads are, I don't know what they did to the, what that thing is on the end of the stair, but, you know what I'm talking about?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we're not even showing doors yet, so we're. We're gonna dial in another.
Well, no, that is a question, you had mentioned previously that, because I know the doors before the stairwells in all of our buildings were added in seventy-two because of fire codes.
Right.
Are we going to have to, if we sprinkle the buildings, will we still have to have those stairwell doors or no?
It depends on the heights of the shaft, so.
Okay.
It, it, you know, the idea of a shaft is it's open from, you know, certain floors to certain floors, and I think if it's, I know if it's, you know, connecting just two floors, we're okay, it's when we get to the fourth floor one that I'm not sure about.
So be theoretically.
So we have to, you know, there's a code thing associated with it.
So theoretically, some of those, we may not have to have so many.
That's correct.
But for the most part, the big staircases, we will have to keep them.
Yeah, but what we would try to do is, is, you know, when we go to, when we go to this floor, we would try to maintain them as being open.
Okay.
All right. And I don't know what that does in regards to code, because you may go up here and have to put a set of doors on this floor.
I mean, they've been there for forty years. I was, I was even thinking, you had mentioned, I was like, oh, that'd be great if we don't have to do them, but if we have to do them, just as long as they're.
The other thing is, you know, we, we're able to, and some of the windows are open here and some aren't on the floors because of adjacencies.
Exactly.
And many, many, many additions.
Right. No, I do think the, the change going from the giant east-west and two long parallel quarters, I think this is a much better, it's much more compact, it gets you those adjacencies you're looking for, so I think this is, I think the, the key challenge is gonna be how, the rear of the building's always been utilitarian, but I think because we're closer to Washington now, it's really gonna be how the massing appears from Washington, which then goes to, I think I articulated previously, how are you gonna, I don't think we expect a level of ornamentation there that we have in the front.
Right.
But I think that how we use the brickwork like they did before, a little bit of a, just different colorations and what have you, to take advantage of, to break up the massing, I think that's gonna go a long way, because the best brickwork we have in the building ironically is above where the dumpster is, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
So, we're gonna be in the same position.
And that was chopped.
Yeah, exactly.
That was chopped, and I don't know what, I can't remember what addition they put, that little, that little roof and that glass below. I don't know when they did that, but they chopped those beautiful arches off.
Right. No, that's seventy-two.
Is that seventy?
Yeah, that's seventy-two. So, yeah, I think that would, that would be something. Yeah, 72. So, yeah, I think that would, that would be something that we've got the brickwork to do something nice with it, so.
And I would just second Eric's feeling that the more, the least amount of doors to the stairways we can have and still meet code, I would be very in favor of.
So this might have been one of those times where I should have gone before you.
[laughter]
But no, you really comprehended, it was a really nice, that was a good job, Eric. So I'm just gonna ask a really brief number of things in terms of some of the things Eric brought up. First, I guess Nancy mentioned, and I know it's true, that people seem to always grumble first because of that one space is so, I would actually go the opposite direction. I think you guys have done a tremendous job of working with a very difficult project and trying to, and Nancy, you weren't saying, I know you weren't saying that, you had, I just, I know you're right, that the human nature is to see things and say, oh, but I want this, and I got.
Right, when you don't get exactly.
Agreed. But nonetheless, I think you've done a really nice job. The question, when we were talking about the auditorium, just one thing, in terms of acoustics, acoustic engineers are working this, or just, I mean, is this just a?
No, we have, we have actually somebody as part of our project team, and somebody that we've used before in regards to acoustics and.
Consultant?
Yeah, it's consultant, in theatrical spaces. And just so everybody knows, a part of our portfolio involves renovations of theaters throughout, a lot of it's throughout the Youngstown area, but, you know, we, we've done a lot of work at the, what we in Youngstown called Powers Auditorium, which was basically an old theater, it was the Warner Theater, and it was retrofitted into the Youngstown Symphonies home. And so we've worked with that, we've worked with, we recently did the band shell and looked at acoustics within those spaces, as well as, in addition to that, which was Ford Recital Hall. So we have, you know, we have that experience on top of experience in regards to K-12, as well as university work. So that's sort of the, that's sort of our portfolio of work that we do.
So just, it's not just restoring the historical grandeur and the architectural beauty, but also maintaining the functional purpose of the room.
Yeah, because.
And more than maintaining, enhancing it.
Enhancing it, yeah. Because right now, like, you know, Eric was right on target when he talked about the additions that happened to that space.
Right.
You know, they put those little wings on the thing.
Right. And just to be, go ahead and.
Well, no, as I say, the consultant who they've used, and she's done stuff with Severance Hall and Playhouse Square, so I mean, it's not like somebody, hey, you walk it down the street, it's somebody who's got a.
Yeah, she's very, she's very knowledgeable. Yeah, we were able to sit down with her. Right before, I think right before I met with, with maybe.
With us.
Was it before you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Weird screaming and stuff.
You heard screaming in there?
Not really.
I could get loud.
That's right, that's right, it was you. Also, the, when you were talking about the orchestra pit and the adjustable, that's known technology that's been used for a long time. I just, it's worth people understanding that that's used in many, many venues.
Yeah, that particular product is used in a number of locations.
And there's no, it's not a weight, there's not a weight restriction issue versus a hydraulic, and so it's a really nice product. It works very well, actually.
And we'll get, you know, like, the company's out of Canada, so we'll get all that information prior to even going to the next step.
Right.
All right, because it becomes, it doesn't only involve, you know, the music department and the theater department, but it also involves, you know, these people that work in the orange area, which is building services. Right? Because all of this stuff, you know, they're the one people that are in this building, in every single room. So we have to think about how it functions in regards to maintenance also.
I can change the light bulbs in the chandelier.
Yeah.
Right. And then I would, I would echo Eric's statement about, I think, doing a schedule, a mock schedule, to see what does it mean to get, so if you move those lockers, what's it gonna take for them in four minutes to get to the locker, get to wherever they're going? And it, usually, it seems like it's the specialists that cause the problems, right? You know, if you're going out to music and you have to get back up to, you know, the other corner of the building. So I think, I think it's worth, so which sort of brings us to something that someone had brought up, one of the people who spoke at the podium. Do you feel that the architecture is driving the educational program, or the educational program's driving the architecture? And what's happening?
Right.
Wow.
Well, it's sort of a combination of both. You know, when you, when you start to look, you know, you mentioned music.
Right.
When you start to look at music, you know, why did we locate music where we located it? Why is, why is music here? It's because of relationship to the existing auditorium, as well as relationship to the ball field over here, because we know that, you know, we know that the band is, you know, the band practice is here, yet they also go out here. And it's the same thing when, you know, let's just use music as an example, when we go to the fourth floor, you know, why, why are we putting vocal up here? Vocal's up there. I mean, it was originally planned for that, so it's really part of the integrity of 1926 to maintain that.
Right.
You know, we know that, you know, we know that there's, there's a separation there, but the spaces are so well-suited for what and how it's being taught, that sort of, you know, it's a, it's a sort of two-way street.
And then the, the other thing, when we talked about budgetary compromises, would it be fair to say, and anyone can throw this out, is, I think it's true that when you first open up, everybody's gonna say, you know, I want it all. I'm gonna just go, and that's appropriate, I'm gonna go gung-ho. But as we are paring down, it would be fair that compromise will be spread out throughout. This is not a, I mean, I think there's a, there's a tendency for people to think, oh, my gosh, I have to do all the compromises. But in reality, what we're trying to do is maintain an integrity of program, and actually enhance programming to what we have now in every which way. I was thinking when Eric was talking about doing an apples-to-apples POR, how many classrooms, and you even started to bring it up, it isn't apples-to-apples, because now we're gonna have common spaces that, you know, the think tanks or whatever else. So you can say, yes, we have fewer classrooms, but it's not fewer educational spaces. So, I mean, so I just, I just, I think I just wanna make sure that everyone understands that, I think everyone walking in says, I want everything, and then when you get everything, you're over budget. So there's gonna be a point where everyone needs to look at, what, where are you gonna draw your lines in the sand? Where is, what's the most important things to have to make the, these programs really what we want it to be?
You know what, Cal, I think that's the, that's a perfect point, and that's the sort of a conundrum of programming. You know, and there's a point, and we're nearly there, at a point where we need to, you know, we started the programming not thinking about compromises, thinking about instead rightsizing. And so, let's truly look at what we need, let's truly look at how we're going to use it, let's truly look at what we're gonna need to support what we're trying to do, nothing more, nothing less. And so we've, with all the working groups, have gone through that justification exercise to say, you know, this is really what, what we need. And so I don't see that there's a lot of fluff in the building because of going that direction from the, from the very start, but there's a point after which, and I think we're almost there, where we stop talking about square footage and how, you know, how much space we need, and start talking about, here's what spaces we have, how do we really make them sing? How do we make them exactly what we need them to be? Because certainly, some function is based on size, but other functions based on quality, scope, you know, other things, other attributes of the space. So we're just about there now. And, and, you know, the first juggle is how much space, it's land grab, right? But then after that, it's about the quality of the space.
And then finally, how well are you gonna insulate the ceiling so we can hear your meetings?
I couldn't hear you.
Wait, what?
No, I just curious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
What I wanna do is, I wanna take a five-minute break, and then we'll get the public comment. And, okay? Five minutes. Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna get going again, but what I wanna do is, I'm gonna encourage people. I don't know what feedback I'm gonna give, but we do, we agreed to allow five minutes per person, and we would encourage individual persons to try to say what you have to say quicker than five minutes. So, we would appreciate that, and I think as we stand now, the hour's gonna get late on us, so if you can say what you gotta say in two minutes, you're my kind of person. So, we'll turn it over.
And in fact, if somebody else has said it before, because we're taking it all into consideration and answering questions after the fact and all that, that we would appreciate that, for everybody to not say the exact same thing.
Right. And what we ask is that, if it's a yes, no, we'll probably answer it. If it's not a yes, no, what we're gonna do is take that, and then we'll post the responses on the website. So we'll turn it over to our team, Steve, and owner's rep, Jim. I mean, Pat, I'm sorry, Pat.
Thank you, Mr. President, Ron. We'd like to first recognize the chairman of the Facilities Accountability Committee. Seku, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, so, hey, by the way, I didn't see Mickey Mouse on the clock tower there. I guess missed that one.
Yeah, we missed that.
Our job at the Facilities Accountability Committee is to make sure that there's nine core competencies that are essentially being followed, that were set forth by the Board of Education some number of years ago. And our job, of course, is to go behind the decisions and make sure that they still follow those nine guidelines. So, just so everybody knows, anybody can contact me, obviously Angie Shaker and anybody else has my contact information, but we have nothing to do with like picking paint colors and any of that kind of stuff. We're a little bit broader than that. So I just wanted to give our first report to the Board of Education. Real quick, I just wanted to say that Steve Shergalis and Steve Zanoni have been absolutely excellent. Anytime that we've, I've sent out an email, or some of the other members have sent out an email, it's gotten back to us right away. The information has been broad and informative, very little follow-up is necessary, they've been doing an excellent job. Angie Shaker also has been doing an excellent job as far as the communication. I think the representatives you have from the administration are doing very good. The subcommittee reports, I'll try to go as quickly as I can, and just do the highlights. From the high school schedule and budget, at this time, we think that is, everything is on time and on budget, it's progressing just fine. From a historic preservation standpoint, we just wanted to bring just a couple of items. There are some citizens that are willing to help remove some of the artifacts, murals, and other items of artistic and historic significance, just perhaps maybe having an opportunity for them to come in and give a hand. Of course, we have to think about from an insurance standpoint how to manage that, we have no suggestions on that one. We also think that there needs to be a little bit of time for the handover of the high school, to make sure that we have an opportunity to go in, because I'm sure once these gentlemen take over, fences will go up and people definitely wanna get out. From a fundraising standpoint, there is some need for fundraising beyond athletics, historic preservation, it definitely is one of those, perhaps to take a look at. But right now, we feel we are on track to successfully raise to 2.6 million, perhaps a little bit more. From an MBA Edge Minority Inclusion standpoint, we are perfectly on track for the 20% target, but we, of course, feel that we'll easily go over that. There are some requests from Ozan directly, but I'm not gonna bring those up right now. For the community pool access, we feel that we're on target, as promised from the Board of Education, for the citizens to have access to the community pool. And I do need to mention that the representative from the University Heights City Council felt that the decision to not use Purvis Park was, and I'm quoting her, a little short-sighted. Move on from that one. Silver lead certification, we feel that we're very on track to have silver lead certification or better. Community engagement, there are a few comments associated with that one. We think that the website is, needs a little bit of a review, and, but we understand that that's underway, so obviously we'll go ahead and comment further on that once we've seen the new one. But from an overall standpoint, we would like to see a bit better way for people to be guided to the website, as far as the communication, that this is here, particularly where to find it. Website's a little cumbersome, a little hard to organize. Most of the comments we've gotten from the community really surround that. Also, a place for community engagement on the website would be for donations, fundraising, and volunteering activities. Career tech. Let's see, some of this is already handled, but one of the things I wanted to make sure was looked at was delaying equipping the new spaces until Phase One is near completion, to determine if there are any excess funds available for things like that. As Eric's pointed out, there's a brand-new, fresh $650,000 coming in. Sure people are gonna wanna do that one. And wanted to see if there was any reach-out available to Shaker or Warrensville School Systems to fund a portion of the new spaces and have some joint-use opportunities. And then, last but not least, we did review the complete program of requirements documents, and we did vote 8-0 in favor without comment. We felt from accountability standpoint, the POR perfectly represented everything that we're trying to accomplish. Any particular questions?
Thank you for your diligence.
Remind us of the meeting Thursday, if people want to attend.
Oh, yes. There, I wanted to make sure, the meetings are, this Thursday is our next one. The public is welcome to come, and there is a question-and-answer section, section, excuse me, at the end of the meeting for anybody to ask any questions they have. And you can contact me personally through email if you have any questions and things like that. I've signed up, and no problem.
It's seven o'clock at the board building.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, our first person is Joan Druschel.
Hello, I think most people here know who I am. My name's Joan Druschel. I've had children in the school district for 22 years, 13 years at the high school, my youngest just graduated. And one of the, I know that there are many concerns with the program, and especially with costs, and one thing I definitely want to address is the importance of the program with the arts. I know, I have three daughters in instrumental music, one in vocal music, and also, they all have been involved with the fine arts. So, is this a personal thing? Yes and no. Because as much as those programs have benefited my children, I also know how much those programs have benefited the district in general, and just the general reputation of the arts for the school and this community. So, I liked what I saw with the, with the plans, with the instrumental music and with the fine arts. I can't address the vocal department as much, because I had less contact with that. And the other thing to consider is the fact that, you know, with, I like the idea with, with the pit, with the renovations, we have a beautiful facility, but also the fact that there are other schools. I know in Lakewood, they use their auditorium for public events, just like we can use the football field, the auditorium. Lakewood uses their auditorium for concerts, regular concerts, rock concerts. A couple years ago, I saw a little group you might have heard of called The Monkees, who performed in the Lakewood auditorium. And it was a very nice concert that was there. So, this isn't just benefiting our students, which it certainly will, and it doesn't just benefit music students, because we, everybody uses the auditorium for something or the other, but it can have a public use, and then that can also bring in eventually more revenue to the district, if we can use that space for community events. I know that more people are here to address specific issues, but I feel that that is an important thing for us to keep in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Craig Magahi.
Most of you know me, Craig Magahi, vocal music teacher and musical theater director here at ITI. Brought a few of my friends, because one of our board members and Steve Shergalis said that the arts people have been quiet, so we're here just to say we want to support and have you please support our kids. I cannot tell you the kids at risk that have been saved due to the theater and the music programs here. You'll be seeing one again, a national star, very shortly. We barely got him through high school. He then went to Tri-C, kicked his way through there, and then I wrote a letter of recommendation to a very fine performing arts school. We'll hear from him one day. This year, we have three students, three students that without your funding that you had given us, would never have had equal access to the arts. One has a full scholarship, and the other kids are both in school with hefty scholarships. We have to give these kids the access. I grew up where my parents sent me to Oberlin Conservatory for lessons. Lessons were important, instruments were important. So we've got to, these kids are talented. But I would just wanna address a few quick issues. We have really, Mr. Hyman and I, Dan Hyman. a few quick issues. We have really, Mr. Hyman and I, Dan Hyman and Nancy Eisenberg, we've loved working with Amy and this process that we're going through. Sometimes, though, she's not there, because she's been in Chicago, and then we show up and things have changed. So we really miss Amy when you're not there with us. But a few things, we're really glad to hear about a pit, because in July, we were told no pit. You've got to fight for a pit now, Craig. Give us ammunition. So I'm really glad that you've acquiesced for a pit. It's just not used for a musical. I mean, if you think that's what it is, it's not. We'll use it almost every choir concert, the band concerts, they want to use that pit. It's, again, what Joan says, is we want the community space. And another reason that we're here tonight is because I've been told by Amy and Steve that there's constant disengagement between the users, the teachers, and some of the community groups. And we want to, can we please bring us together for this auditorium space? As Joan said, and I have Pam Fein, although she's still here, it's been a late night for everybody, I've been working with Heights Youth Theater. I'm gonna bring her into the school on Friday to talk to the children in the middle school, to the teachers, to get the youth theater. We're about ready to lose Heights Youth Theater from here. Do their schedules and ours kind of butt up? Yeah, but they're doing great things for kids. So we're trying to work this out. We want a community space. I'll tell you, the art teachers out salivating on that third floor because of all that natural light, I mean, they have really hit a home run. Thank you for that. That is so important to them. I hear you guys are still like, well, maybe it might be going. Please don't. They're very happy. But what we wanted, Nancy Eisenberg, Dan Hyman, myself, as representation of our school staff, was a place where we could all be together and collaborate together, where the artwork, because if you look at the four musicals, the four instrumental concerts, the four vocal concerts, the gospel choir concerts, there's 11 major events in this school that these kids could be showing their artwork. It has to be a safe space. So Amy had left us with a nice little drawing that had us all together in a brand-new building, and then we came back and it was changed.
That was a goal document.
Well, we were feeling really good when we saw it, okay? We're not architects, we're not the people writing the checks, sorry Scott, but we're like, wow, we're together, we can collaborate. But we want to collaborate, just like Joan said, with the whole community. I mean, at Lakeside, they had the spinners in. Earth, Wind &amp; Fire came here, and they sold out. If we have a proper space with a pit, I don't care if it's old or new, as long as it's acoustically great. And what they didn't tell you, maybe they're trying to hide, but it's Sonia Winner who they brought in. She helped on the Severance Hall Project. My friends and colleagues know of Sonia, and it was her, one of her ex-husbands who brought back the theaters. So we are really happy that Sonia is involved here, because she understands, and this is what she told me. She said acoustics are a bunch of measurement evaluation, and then a bunch of voodoo. And she had me right there, because it is. You can do all the measurement evaluation you want with spaces, sound waves, rectangles, and everything else, but what she is here, we're happy. And to hear about a pit, thank you. If we could work on wing space, but we would like that we could all use 24/7, 365 days, Heights Youth Theater could use it. So please, we're just here to say we love the arts, and hopefully, we can keep, again, massaging this little plan a little bit. Thank you very much.
Joan Spurrel.
Hello, yes. My question actually, I have two questions, and they relate to some things happening currently, because I know that with the high school, with the lead certification, I've been reassured that the materials used will be, create a healthy environment, physical environment, for our students, that the materials won't be toxic. But in the meantime, my question was, as you do renovations to Wiley and then any of the other elementary or middle school buildings, I'm wondering if there's someone looking out for what materials we're using that they not be toxic, that they not exacerbate students' current problems who have asthma, other autoimmune diseases, other such illnesses. And I just have a quote here about environmental illness. This is from The Plain Dealer a few years ago, and it's tips from Dr. Michael Rosen at the Cleveland Clinic. One of the keys, especially, oh no, sorry, avoid materials. Household cleaners, rugs, air fresheners, even some furniture that emit lots of volatile hydrocarbons and volatile organic compounds. As Rosen put it, you want to use cleaning fluids too that are, in fact, safe enough to drink. So in the meantime, I'm hoping that we have someone who's been attentive to these issues and whatever carpets being laid down and adhesives used in the other buildings, that we are, we can be sure that they are safe. So that's a kind of a question and a comment, because I know there's been carpeting being put down in other buildings. My other question and comment are, with the new $3 million stadium, I hope, Kristin Hughes had expressed an interest in this when recognizing that having a large plastic field has its benefits, but it also has its drawbacks, as we know that Lake Erie advocates are concerned about plastic pollution and microplastics in the watershed, and there's no way to keep the breakdown, the plastics that are breaking down from the field from going into the watershed. We were hoping to offset by a tiny bit some of that damage from that field with a renewed, Kristin said she wanted to see great recycling at the new stadium and within the athletic department. So I'm hoping that as part of those $3 million, that you have a state-of-the-art recycling and trash plan and facility set up for September 13th, and would love to see us have an anti-litter campaign and educate all the athletes as well as our students about why we can all, that we can all play a role and do our part to reduce the amount of plastic pollution by making sure we're not littering and that we are recycling. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. And I hope I don't get this name wrong, but I think it's Joey Nicoletti?
Hey, how you doing? Joey Nicoletti, I recently graduated from Heights High back in June, and for those of you who don't know me, I basically lived on the fourth floor my four years at Heights. So my main focus is gonna be on the cedar level with the auditorium and dressing rooms and stuff like that regarding to the music department. My first question for the architects is, looking at this stage, does the shape of it change at all? Like, does the size reduce? Does the little extra space in front of the main stage curtain reduce at all? Because looking at the picture here, it looks like it's square as opposed to juts out like it usually does.
You can answer if it's too quick.
Sure.
Yeah, it's pretty quick. Right now, we're looking at maintaining the profile of the stage as it currently stands.
Okay, cool.
There were some other studies that we were doing, but it seems, in the best interest for the overall project, that it should maintain its original shape.
Cool. And then, also, I'm looking here, and it says, dressing rooms and restrooms behind the black box and scene shop. They are tiny. And I don't know if you guys have ever watched 32 girls in the same room at the same time trying to put on a costume and makeup and hair and all that stuff. It, it's quite a sight to see, let me tell you. Because, I mean, actually, if you want to, if you want to have, you know, with the limited space we have, yes, I have, actually, because we are, when we do the musical stuff, we're stuck to the social room, the cafeteria. I've changed in a boiler room, and like a closet. So I'm, you know, kind of worried about that, because as of what we have now, the space that we have and the access the public has to it is kind of uncomfortable for us. You know, I don't want to see, I don't want to have people look at me butt naked, one of us backstage changing for a show. So there's that.
Well, I'll just real quickly answer that. We're concerned about the same thing, and we are looking at that right now.
Absolutely. And then, I heard you guys say that during a musical or a production, the use of the black box and scene shop could be available. How? I'm a little curious as to that, just wondering.
Maybe not the scene shop, because it's usually filmed.
Well, right, yeah.
But the black box, you know, sometimes a black box is an empty room. So it could be used for back of the house scenes and that kind of stuff.
Okay. I took theater this year at Heights, last year, rather, and I know what the teacher wants for the space. And, you know, in that class, we actually perform scenes. We make scenes, we do shows, like little tiny productions. And I know he wanted that to be a very usable space throughout the year, which would include during the musical. So I'm not entirely sure if that would be a hindrance during that time, you know, because classes, not for me, because I'm always a lead, but classes do go on during the musical. So, you know, during that time, we have, sorry, we have, you know, scenes going on, and I know he wanted to use the black box basically five days out of the school week for, you know, scenes and shows and lessons even to do. So that's basically where I'm at. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. Evan Adine.
Hi, I'm Evan Adine, and I'm a current student at Cleveland Heights High School right now. I'm gonna be a senior this year. And I'm more concerned with the VMD as well, mostly the fourth floor. As I look at the floor plan, it looks like it hasn't really changed at all, which concerns me, because we need a lot more storage space. Over the years, we've accumulated a lot of set pieces, props, costumes, and a lot of sheet music, which is stacked up in the hallway on the fourth floor. And so we don't really have anywhere to put that, so it gets very cluttered. As well, I think we need a little bit more dancing space for the singers, because we have one room for the singers and one room for choir. And dancing gets very congested, and everyone's bumping into each other, and it's kind of hard to figure out choreography and everything in that small space that we have. That's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Evan. Tim Conklin, please. Oh, sorry, Kim.
We all know Kim. Kim Conklin. Yeah, I have kind of one opinion and then a couple of process comments. I saw one iteration of this plan that had the VMD actually on the first floor with the IND. I would like to see that again, because I think it speaks to the relationship issues that you brought up as kind of guiding principles in the design. And I think it would encourage a kind of a collaboration between the instrumental and the vocal departments and students in those departments, that I think, I just kind of imagine from a community point of view, somebody who's not involved in the schools, that it would seem odd to build a brand-new building, virtually brand-new, and have these departments split. It seems illogical to me. Okay, that's my opinion. The process comments are, I'm feeling like there is not a way for us as parents and community members to know how these results reflect the desires of the teachers and, the teachers, really. And it kind of puts parents and teachers, I think, in an awkward relationship, because of, it's non-transparent. I mean, I don't, this look is good to me, but I don't know whether or not that necessarily looks good to the teachers who gave you the input. I'm seeing some nods. I don't know if that's making sense or not, but that seems like a big gap to me, and I'm wishing that I had that information, and that I don't need to put a teacher or a department head in an awkward position of asking, hey, do you like it?
Right. We, yeah, we invited the teaching staff to, you know, they had formed work groups.
Right.
And so we invited them to meet with the architects on a regular basis throughout the summer, and they've done that. They've been coming in and meeting with them and giving their feedback and giving their input into the design process. So, you know...
No, I know that, and I trust that. And I think you did a fabulous job at getting the community input as well in the springtime. But what I now don't know is, when I look at these pictures today, these drawings, how closely do those reflect what those teachers said they wanted? Because I trust the teachers.
Well, not 100%, but we're getting there, right? We're still working it, and, you know, we've got more to go. You've heard...
I mean, I think it's along the lines of the kinds of questions Ron asked.
I would suggest that this, we might want to answer this question online. I think we can spend some time thinking back and forward.
Well, if I could say, Ron, just one thing. Kim, obviously, you were here all evening. That was sort of a lot of my push in the earlier prodding for the process conversation, because that's very important to me, and to all of us. But I think maybe going forward, when we have these presentations, what we can say is, and I know when, when I've sat down with John to look at these things early, my questions are almost always, are the educators happy with this? Who am I going to hear from who's not, who's not happy with this? Who are, you know, and those are the types of questions that, that I know we all, we all ask. But I can guarantee you that I'm comfortable that for the most part, those compromises are being made. I know that that's, that's not gonna make you happy here, but I think going forward, we need to be more explicit about the compromises that have been made. And then the people who have had to compromise need to accept that at the phase that we are or not, and continue to advocate. But we're, you know, I think maybe if we can be more explicit in these presentations, it might be helpful. Do you agree?
And I think the statement on the process to address that particular issue might be important, too. So we can work on that, and it at least would be out there, so that when we come back next time, either that question, like Nancy would say, either that question has been sufficiently answered, or we still need to do more with it. And I think what we feel, certainly as a board, and I think our consultants as well, is that there's still this interaction going on, and, you know, one of the issues that does come up is who has to, who has to give up what and when, and how does that happen? Who makes that decision? So I think we can spend a little bit of time just kind of going back into saying, this is how we, this is how we got here, so to speak.
Right. And then my, my second process comment actually was to that point, which is to say, I, I think that it would be beneficial to more often, what I've observed is that all the special interests kind of, like, go through this central point, like, meet with the architects, right? And I think often, if those special interests were placed together to speak to each other, that this would be, there would be quicker compromise, actually, because people have multiple interests. They're in these groups to speak for a particular interest, but in fact, they're mostly parents and citizens of the community who have multiple interests and will be reasonable, you know, you're almost like putting people in a position to be, you know, solidly representing their special interests, you know, like a lobby.
Yeah, no, that's the next one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Sam Bell.
Well, Sam Bell, I'll start off by very briefly echoing some of Joan's comments, Joan Spurrel's comments, about the carpeting in particular at Monticello that's going in right now, among other things, there are other areas that are being carpeted, the music room with the trombone players, with the spit valves. Not really a great idea. Now, I know we don't have a sustainability administrator in place yet, but could we maybe think about maybe getting somebody like a "don't do boneheaded stupid things" administrator in place? That would be really helpful. Thanks much. Bye.
Thank you, Sam. This name is lined out, but I'm gonna call them anyway. Liche Tenegro?
Yeah.
And Sarah Lins? Greg Galouli?
Hi, I'm Greg Galouli, class of 1980, Heights High. My wife is class of '83, Heights High. We have two kids in the, in the high school now, one's a senior and one's a freshman. I wanted to tell a little story... I wanted to tell a little story, Joan was talking about public use, I remember when I was little, my dad took me to the Monticello Auditorium, which was big then, because I was little, to see Stan Kenan, and his Big Band. That was a little while ago. I did want to say, about the arts programs, and particularly the various music programs, that there's, obviously, people know this now, is a very strong correlation between kids' performance in music, and kids' performance in mathematics. And I think that those two can strengthen each other. I've seen it actually in my own kids, and I know there's plenty of studies that support that. And I think, by giving sufficient emphasis to the arts, we really do enhance not only our kids' enjoyment of their high school experience, but also their performance in their academics as well. I wanted to emphasize that an auditorium, a stage, a scene shop, rehearsal space, those are learning spaces, every bit as much as a classroom is, or a ballfield is. And please, when it comes to budget time, give that due consideration. And I also, the last thing I want to say is, that making sure that our, our arts programs have modern facilities and modern equipment, really enhances the relevance of the education the kids get there. You want to make sure that the things that you teach your kids, the equipment that they're using, is something they're gonna see when, after they graduate. I've done a lot of, of really minor theater stuff with improvised equipment, and I wouldn't even start to claim that that equipment is a good thing to provide to a kid who's really trying to learn things in the arts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Anne Payne?
She had to go.
Oh, all right. Linda King?
She had to go.
All right. Marcy Denton?
I have two points I would like to make. The first, since we are getting into this kind of minutia, many of us women have been to public events, where there are performance events, where there are intermissions, and the line to the women's room is always longer. Thank you! And it seems like a silly issue, but it really does get to be an equity issue, where the bathrooms are designed as such, that there are some women who cannot use the bathroom before intermission is over, and the men are in and out like that. And I can't help but wonder if it's not the same for our students with their bathrooms, when they've only got four minutes between classes. So I'm asking that perhaps this firm could be even cutting-edge and trend-setting in its design of the bathrooms, to make them equitable for the women and the men. Main point for me being here, though, is, again, to reiterate how important it is to do whatever we can to sustain, maintain, and even improve the quality performing arts program we have here. Many years ago, when my three children were just entering Heights Schools, I wasn't sure if this community was, if this, if the school district was really for us or not, wasn't sure how long we were gonna stay, until Mr. Magahi had kids from the elementary school in the chorus for the musical, the high school musical, and my son, I think, was maybe in fourth grade at the time, and I walked in and said, "Oh yeah, we are staying." And then later, it was when my son was in middle school at Monticello, and Monticello at the time did not have a PTA, seeing all the kids up there on that stage, and it really inspired me, and I thought, "Okay, we're starting a PTA." And I'm about to have my second year as PTA president at Monticello. I brought my son Garrett to freshman orientation at Heights today, and I remember that first time we walked in, it was a comfortable, wonderful place, and I really don't think we would be here if it weren't for a fabulous arts program welcoming us back when he was in elementary school. So as we're keeping things in mind, please really remember to keep those arts a priority. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcy. Alan Wilkinson?
Again, Alan Wilkinson. Several things. Two areas in the POR, you mentioned you were over, that was the art room and the auditorium. Is the cost per square foot of adapting them less than the rest of the building, thus making them really not an impact to your bottom line? The fact that you're using older spaces and not, I don't know the answer to that question, but it would sort of say that the cost per square foot is lower, having more volume there is not a big problem. Heating, if you do the heating and ventilation system that reduces energy usage by a factor of 10, which is the target, square footage is not a big driver, or volume is not a big driver in terms of long-term operating costs. So it's in that first cost thing, and this may not be a first cost driver, but it's a question to ask. Parking was a big part of the last meeting, didn't come up at all this time, it has a big impact on the site. Mechanicals, wasn't discussed, it's space, as I understand it, it's underneath the cafeteria, maybe partially under the library, it's on the Washington Street level, but it's, it's space that I think, and it's big enough space that you ought to sort of see where it fits in there. Roofline and its uses, the use of the roof, important discussion that hasn't happened yet, at least publicly. And daylighting is a consequence of that. I go back to the two points I made last meeting, cost-impact drivers in the design process, that didn't really come up in any kind of conscious dominant way, in terms of your decision-making, you know, what are the architectural things that are driving implementations that have special costs? You know, it seems like cost has got to be a part of this discussion, every one of these meetings, and it's not happening particularly. Education function, collaboration came up tonight, but education function is still not being addressed in a meaningful way, to sort of see, these spaces mean what education? And then I can go on and make my extra pitch about building as a teaching tool, not a part of the discussion, because educational program is not a part of the discussion. CTE and science, you know, they've moved that. There was a layout earlier, which put those in spatial location, that location has gone away. Understand the reasons for the changes, but if there's an educational collaboration that is so well-tested over at least a century, that's the connection of technical education to science education. I mean, some of the other administrative drives to do new mixing of science with other things, we have a lot of new fads that go through. We want to be sure that the traditional successes are not compromised by new-fangled imaginations. So that's, that. Another piece, another piece is really career technical education. Some of us had discussion about that, just as the arts folks have their discussions. Our dominant constituency in our school system, I believe, would be most served by more technical education, and gives them a chance for a living wage in the future. There's an equity issue with this. This is a, this would be a transformation in consciousness for our district, to see CTE on par with every other academic endeavor that's in the district. And I think it serves more kids. So I don't know why we wouldn't embrace that, and go forward with it, so.
Thank you, Alan. Jody, I can't really read the last name, it's, somebody named Jody here?
Yeah, it doesn't.
There's Jody. But I thought...
She must have.
Okay. And then it would, next would be Mario, Mastran, I'm gonna mess your name up, Mario. Is Mario still there?
Is Mario here?
No, he was here. He was here.
He was here.
All right, and we have Anita Pontremoli?
Terry.
I'm sorry.
Actually, for the whole room.
So my name is Terry Pontremoli, and I first want to really acknowledge this room full of smart people. There's not much that I can say that hasn't already been said, but I would like to say, I have spent a lot of time in orchestra pits all my life, and I do know that orchestra pits are important, restrooms are important, practice rooms are important. The black box, I can tell you, I work closely with people running a black box at Tri-C. It's a very limited thing. I would not, it's a buzzword these days, everybody seems to think they need a black box, but frankly, I think we would all be better served if we would use that space for more theater-oriented things, I think, the time, the program. I also just kind of think that the core of this emotion here is over the arts. Cleveland Heights has continuously produced wonderful people in the, in the arts. The community feels it, the school is about it. So I think to really make sure that this is done right, because this is going to be done for the next 40, 50 years, I just hope we all come to a good understanding. Thanks.
Would Terry also like to make any comments?
That was Terry.
Oh, I'm saying, okay. She did it for us. Yeah, got you, guys. That's, that's all we had. Mr. Register?
Okay. Great. Thank you, everyone. I see a hand out there. You've already spoken, are you okay? Well, that's good.
Can I have that? One more point?
One minute.
One other piece, I talked to Amy about it already, a process piece. Have the working groups do written evaluations of the design, possibly two iterations of that, or, or an iteration at the right, we might be at the right maturity for that, but we don't, we aren't getting the closed-loop understanding of are the users really satisfied with the outcome.
Okay, we got it, I think. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay, that's fine. Anybody else? Everybody's good?
Thank you.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Gainer?
Mr. Kobel?
Yes.
Mr. Seppel?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Certainly.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.[1778.23]